Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, January 25th. It is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Cappell City Council, and there is a quorum present, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room. When our executive session is over, I will come out and announce our work session, and we'll invite the public to attend. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. The time is 6:59 PM. We have adjourned from executive session and are convening into work session in the first-floor conference room. The public is invited to join. Thank you.
Frustration?
Why do you have John right next to you?
It used to be recycling went around the corner.
Do what I do, just try to get it with my finger and work around it. That's what I say, too. But right now that I have no taste, I'm like...
You hit it through, but no...
I got stuff all over my hands. How long was that happening? Oh, I guess, like, what? I thought maybe it was just like a short period.
All right. The time is 7:00 PM. We're going to convene into work session. We have three items to discuss. The first one is discussion of the agenda items. Are there any questions or comments about our agenda items for tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to item B, which is a discussion regarding the temporary sign ordinance by Ms. Hurley.
I just kind of want to hear your presentation. I'm sorry. Actually, I guess I don't want to hear your presentation. I think I'm a little offended, but...
She knows how to clear a room.
Here for questions.
Gotcha. Okay, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I'm here to discuss the temporary sign ordinance and seek guidance on how you all would like for staff to proceed. We're excited to propose this minor change to the current ordinance that we believe can provide a win-win for both the businesses and our community. And as you all know, City Council did approve a moratorium of enforcement on temporary sign ordinances on May 12th of 2020. This was done to help the businesses in their recovery efforts due to pandemic, because many of our businesses were forced to shut down or limit their offerings. And we met on this multiple times, and City Council extended the moratorium three times to continue to aid businesses in their advertising efforts. The last time we discussed the moratorium in September, the decision was made to allow the moratorium to expire on December 31st of 2021, but City Council did express a desire to help businesses with advertising beyond the pandemic at that time. So, I'm sorry. Staff surveyed the businesses to see if additional banners each year would provide the same benefit that other types of signs provided, and the overwhelming majority of the responses felt that the addition of banners each year would provide the same benefit. So therefore, I'm before you tonight to propose a minor modification to our temporary sign ordinance to help our Cappell businesses. The current ordinance allows five banners per year for the businesses. Each business is allowed a grand opening banner the year that the business opens, and it's permitted to be up for 45 days. All other banners are permitted for 14 days, and there must be a gap of 15 days between each banner. Banners shall not exceed 40 square feet in size. They must be attached to either posts so that it stays tight, or a building, and they must be secured so that it will not flap in the wind. Banners must also be on the applicant's property, or the applicant must have written permission from the property owner to have their banner there. And finally, banners do require a permit before they are put up. The only change that we're proposing tonight is to increase the number of allowable banners from five to 12 each year. No other changes are being proposed at this time, and we feel like this is a great offering to both our businesses to help them with their advertising, but it still protects the community from visual clutter. And so with that, based on your direction tonight, we'll bring back revised ordinance for approval at a later date if you want to move forward with this change. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Brianna?
I can speculate, but I'd rather ask you why from five to 12.
We decided, so other than the year that they had a grand opening, that would give them a banner, one banner.
Banner.
Yes.
So in your memo, I think you said you had limited responses on your surveys. How many did you actually get back?
We did. We had 23 responses. This was back, we discussed that during the time of the moratorium. And so we only had 23 businesses that responded. But I believe, if I remember correctly, 21 out of 23 felt that the additional banners would provide the same benefit.
Well, just to break, you had four or five. 23 is enough to be, I mean, it's not a majority or anything, but it's more. Okay, thank you.
But that's out of how many?
Well...
A bunch.
We opened it to every business in Cappell, so it was available to every business. But we did directly, so we sent it through the chamber. We put it out through just our regular avenues, but then we also targeted, we sent it specifically to the businesses that utilized temporary banners during the shutdown.
How many businesses do we have?
Oh, we have about 1,500 businesses in town, but there were only about 40 that we sent it to directly because of, they were actually utilizing temporary signs during the time. Now, we did not require a business name in response, so I don't know if it was 23 of the 40 that responded or if it was others outside of that that responded, but we had.
And then, when you say banners, we're just strictly talking about just banners, not yard signs, state sign, nothing?
Correct. Just banners. Yes, sir. This, if I can, the city went through a pretty extensive process several years ago to actually eliminate some of those bandit signs because the community felt they were causing visual clutter. So that's why we feel like this is a win. It still gives opportunity for the businesses to continue advertising, but it doesn't create that visual clutter that the community wanted to remove before.
This would not allow the little signs, I don't even, I think Macklin's had one. It was on a post that was flapping on.
Correct. Other signs, yeah. It would strictly be banners.
Brianna?
If we were to approve this, when would it go into effect? And then, what's the timeline for them to comply?
So I'll back up. After we all decided, or after you all made the decision for the moratorium to expire on December 31st, at the beginning of December, we sent letters to every business in Cappell telling them that the moratorium would expire on December 31st. Then, starting January 1st, we would start enforcing the code just like we always would. So we still have a few, actually, that are out, and so we are following the typical code process for those, to get those removed. But so, to answer this question, it could go into effect immediately, but we would plan on sending a letter to every business again to inform them of the change.
Kevin?
I'm a big fan of this. I think it accomplishes multiple things. One of the things, and the reason why I opposed the extension of the moratorium was of the condition and quality of the signage. So I like the fact that we're maintaining the two-week interval, basically, and then you're required to take it down for two weeks virtually and then put it back up. So that's going to force the business owners to go out, take it down, and then when they set it back up, you know, reduce that flapping and things like that. But I love the extra availability of sign opportunities. I think that that's great. So I think this is a big win for our business community and will help eliminate a lot of those things I didn't like about just having that moratorium. So I think it'll keep the city looking nice. So I think this is great. Thank you.
You just didn't like the giant blow-up gorilla?
Yeah.
Yes, that is correct. I did not like the giant blow-up gorilla.
So do we have a consensus here?
Absolutely.
Everybody? Okay. All right.
Thank you very much, Mayor Council.
All right. Item C is the discussion of the City Council winter retreat. I do want to thank everybody for the very good conversations that we had. We gave the mic and staff the direction that they needed to go forward and began the planning for 2022, 2023, and that was exactly what needed to come out of it. So thank you very much. We did have two items that were left, not covered at the end of the retreat. The first one was the Crime Controlled District.
Well, we have this scheduled somewhere. But this is just a reminder, we have an election in November. So as an example, your election budget would be high in the 22, 23 budget, because we have a November election and a May election. And so, anyway, so we have, the deadline to order is August 22nd, last day to register, October 11th, early voting the 24th and the 4th, and Election Day on November 8th. What we have done in the past, and we will do again, as you know, the city cannot be a proponent, or an advocate, or anything along those lines as it relates to these types of elections, but we do have the ability to create an information mailer, or information sheet, give y'all talking points, you know, if you go to Lions and Rotary and those kinds of things, so that you can present the facts. You always have the individual ability to express your opinion, but you can't necessarily say, this is Council X, Y, and Z, whatever it is the council's doing. So this is just to give you an idea of what will be happening this fall, should y'all go ahead and call the election. The one thing about the Crime Controlled District that's different than the street is the Crime Controlled District is for 10 years. So as you know, we're trying to get that changed on the street side so that we can line these things up, but it's time to do the Crime Controlled District, so it'll be for a 10-year period.
So there will be an agenda item on a future?
There will be, yes, there will be for calling the special election. So that's really all. I just wanted to make you aware that that was on the council's radar for this year.
Don?
When does the current authorization end, I guess?
Wait, is it January?
Okay. I was just curious. There's no way to roll that into the main section?
That's right. That's one of the questions that comes up for these, that and the street, is, is it effective the 8th, or is it effective? I'm just using that as an example. But my understanding is that it's effective at the beginning of the new year.
Who's going to do the election? County?
The county does. We don't do that.
Yeah. And so they're going to charge us that ridiculous amount of vote?
That's, well, that's still being worked out with the Dallas County as far as how many precincts and who many else is counting the elections and all that kind of good stuff.
But just to remind you, a lot of that cost was make up for undercharging us for about 10 and 12 years. That's why we had that big...
We don't want to talk about that.
I understand that they pass that cost along, probably, but it's cheaper than we can run.
Add your boy down there.
You come and saw it, y'all, too.
So what else is on this election? I mean, so our locations, nothing for the city, right?
That's correct.
Nothing for the school board either. They're in May, right?
Unless they're calling a bond election.
So it's just going to be the national or the...
Constitutional amendment, because the state legislature does...
Trying to make sure we were going to get turnout. That's what I was trying to think through, is make sure there's going to be reason for people to come vote.
And there will be, as far as I know, there'd be the state legislature as their election stands.
Yeah.
The issue with that is we'll be at the bottom of the ballot.
Anybody have any other questions on this? This is just a FYI. This is more just informational for you guys. You're welcome. All right. The second one was, we had a discussion on boards and commissions. Actually, the mayor, Protem, and I had talked a little bit. We wanted to bring it back for you, and I think after some other incidents, it's pretty clear we're going to revise our screening process on boards and commissions a bit. We will be interviewing all candidates for all positions, specifically the special counsel and the conduct review board. And for the major committees that, and I'm not sure exactly which ones that's going to be, certainly planning and zoning, Parks and Rec, and I'm not sure about the Smart City and Ford, but we'll go to three members screening those. Now, if you want, and this is up to you guys, if you want three members on all of them, we can do that. It's just going to be a lot more meetings for you guys in October. So that's really the discussion. Mark?
And what's the purpose of going to the three members?
Well, one is to keep from having a split count on a candidate, and the other is to provide better screening of the applicants.
Just real quick.
I don't know if I agree with, I mean, is it up for a vote to go to three?
I will, it was our opinion that we needed to do that, but you can certainly overturn that.
Well, and just to add some context to that, by all means, like, I think it's up for discussion, because I think the question was, or not the question, but even you and I chatted about it. There was a time when we did three on some of the bigger boards, and a lot of it was because of, sometimes there was a tie, right? And so having that third person. Now, the boards that he just talked about, we didn't have that situation, right, this last time. They were different boards. So the question is, do we want to have three for some of the bigger boards like we did in the past, which I think was a recommendation of a small committee that included Marvin, Nancy, and I'm not sure who else. It may have been Karen. Or you, yeah. Of having three people on some of the bigger boards. We also have a lot of candidates. And so the question was, do we go back to that, which we had before, or do we leave it as is? Or is there anything else that we should do in addition to screening all candidates for all committees? So it's open for discussion.
Yes. I'm with Mark. I don't agree with adding additional. I think two is fine. Yeah, there might be some disengagement, but having a third one, then basically one might be always outvoted, too. I think right now, having two is sufficient to be able to select the committee, commissions, and boards.
Kevin?
Well, I will say that when we were sitting in this room trying to debate about a, we had a choice between two candidates, and there were people around the table that had never met those candidates, that had never, all they really had was a raw application to try to determine who we were going to vote for. I felt that I was put in a very compromised position because I didn't know anything about, you know, and I understand that's a very rare occurrence, that just doesn't happen, but I really felt like I would have done that person, or that choice a disservice, because I would have just been voting blindly. And, you know, for me, if going to three people on maybe certain boards will prevent that from happening, I am in favor of that. I don't know if we want to determine maybe like a threshold of applicants, like if there are, you know, more than 10 applicants or something like that for a particular board. Maybe that triggers a third person being added, but, I mean, we had that situation, but I know that John and I were on a, you know, committee, Bijou and I were on a committee. We were able to kind of decide things there, but it was a small group of applicants, so it made it a little bit easier. But just, I don't want to ever be put in that position or ask another council member to be put in a position to make a blind choice when they don't have all the details or they weren't there to interview. So those are my thoughts on that.
You're asking for Ashley. The City Council members can still pull out each member to vote again under general dais, right, I mean, dais. You can take a part vote. The member that I'm appointing, I can propose and have a motion, then all City Council members can vote on that particular person, correct?
That's a really, that's a question for Bob. I don't, I, so you're saying...
You can vote on each individual appointment if you want to.
Okay. So even if three people decide two to one in the City Council when we are interviewing, when we go to the dais, we can individually select and vote.
Assuming that you make the proper request to the chair, yes.
Okay, thank you.
John?
I understand what Kevin was saying, and I agree that you need to know more about the candidates before you decide, but I still don't believe that we need to go to three-person interviewing. I think two is really sufficient, and we could have an alternative way of, maybe another two that I interviewed, another board could go in and have that, if there's a dispute, then, you know, assign that to a certain member, but not have each interview the three members interviewing. So I think this is over.
You know, I do, I understand John's point on that. I think, no matter what we come up with, if there is, I think that there needs to be some sort of mechanism to where if there is a dispute, that more council member get, more council members get in front of those candidates to make sure that we can make an informed decision, you know, for those positions. And, I mean, three members is fine if that's the way we want to go down. If the two council members are in a, you know, they're kind of locked up, and we need to bring in, you know, one or two more, whatever that is, to where we can do a, you know, another evaluation so we've got more bodies there, I'd be fine with that as well. It's just, I think that putting uninformed council members about those particular candidates, it's unfair to them, it's unfair to us.
Brianna?
Did you have something?
Well, you were first.
Okay. Now, I was just going to say... So, no, I was just going to say that also, in the past, we had some situations where, and maybe we're not having that now, but a lot of the same people were getting selected for the boards, and so having that third person helped in some of these, especially some of these bigger boards that everybody wants to be on, like P&amp;Z and Park Rec. But just to give everyone some background as to kind of another reason why they had the three.
Mayor, I heard that one of the reasons might be because you don't get a tie vote, that you get, you know, somebody's going to lose out. As far as Kevin's problem, I don't see how three people are going to make Kevin any smarter about the... About the candidate.
Well, there we go.
Am I wrong, Mayor?
Well, the main thing is, is that it's to prevent a situation to where I'm put, I'm forced to choose someone that I have no information about. Now, if another council, a third council member can break a tie or something like that, so the other council members aren't put in a position, that's what I am trying to prevent. I don't necessarily think I'm going to get any smarter in the process.
It's to prevent the unsmarter.
There it is. No one wants that.
So if we went back to the two and we had a conflict, a couple of things could happen. I could get to be, I could be the arbitrator and either demand that the two sit down and get locked in a room until a decision is made. Of course, Kevin would always have an advantage there. Or I could literally be the arbitrator. You wouldn't have to pick a random council member. It would fall on me, and I'd be okay doing that, too.
Then we would have two.
I would always heavily recommend that the group of two come up with the right decision. Don?
I would say I could be on board with that idea, where you have the tiebreaker, someone that comes in. No offense, Kevin, but this second round of interviews, I'm not in favor of that. Like, going back to, well, again.
I wouldn't want administratively...
Yeah, we don't want that.
I don't even know that we can do that. It's hard enough getting everybody there the first time.
But we do have a process in place. Everyone gets to vote if there is a dispute.
But no one, not everybody knows about the people, though.
And that's my concern, is that if, let's say that you two were the only ones interviewing them, and then y'all were at a, you know, a standstill on who to appoint, and then you're asking everyone else to even out there, vote for the person that we want to, we don't have any information besides the, just the application. We weren't in the interview process. We weren't in the discussion on, you know, who might be more qualified for what reasons. I mean, you know, I remember just looking at their, like, trying to figure out, well, this person's lived here longer, this person wants to serve on one board or two boards, and I don't think that that's fair.
So it wasn't the vote out there. You're right. You could have made a special motion and done anything you wanted to. It was the recommendation from the nominating committee on who to put on the ballot.
Yeah, I mean, I understand what you, Kevin, your point is very valid. I'm not debating that at all. But we only interview candidates for 10 minutes, and, you know, we just...
But I will say that in 10 minutes, you can learn quite a lot about someone versus just, the alternative is looking at a piece of paper.
Right. No, but you do have an opportunity at the work session. If we find out there is a dispute, then you have two more weeks, you know, before we finally vote on the dais.
There would not, I mean, I'm so sorry. There's a debate happening here, or discussion. How could it be here, Mayor?
You know, this last October, you and Brianna did have those two weeks, and you still couldn't come up with a decision. So that left us, as a group in here, with a very uncomfortable position, to Kevin's point. So we're just trying to eliminate that from happening and still be fair to everybody that's concerned, whether they're being nominated or the inter... You know, there's a fairness to you guys, too. And I realize asking for three, you know, to be on three committees or three people, it's a huge commitment, so I understand. So since this is pretty much, you know, just by, there's no vote on this, this is just a process we follow. We'll go back to the two people per committee. If the group can't, if the two can't come to a decision, the mayor will lean on you heavily, and if that doesn't work, then I'll make the decision.
Are you giving yourself the ultimate power? You're giving yourself the ultimate power?
Well, he's the tiebreaker out there if need be, so.
That's true.
It's just precedent for ten freaking times.
John, you didn't hear me. I said, I will lean on the pair heavily, because I don't want to make the decision.
I'm just saying, you're giving yourself the ultimate power. Either way.
Deserve it.
Well, hopefully, we won't have it happen again.
All right. That's very true.
Are you done with that one?
Yes.
I have a question about the commission board.
Sure.
So just like I asked about the conduct review board, the CRDC board?
Yes.
We have two council members?
Yes.
Part of it? What's the reasoning behind that? Because, what is the reasoning behind that?
The reasoning behind that was to, if there were any questions on what the... Can we close that? No, I can't hear.
Anyway, Don, you may not be able to close that.
No, it's open.
Was I not loud?
I am sorry.
Question, too. When I came on, the exact same question.
So let's see if I give the same answer now that we gave back then.
Could you restate the question? I am so sorry I didn't hear.
No, I asked about CRDC board that has two council members on that board, and what is the reasoning behind putting two council members on that board?
Councilmember Long wants to answer that one.
Yeah. There were two guys on the board last year. That was me and the mayor. We didn't ask for it, but that's what happened. And we got in a meeting about the bridge going to the core. And we, as a council, had voted to approve the... And we, as a council, had voted to approve the, the bridge. Then we went to the committee, we went to the CRDC board, and we were going through that, those comments, and they started talking about the cost of the bridge. And I said, the two guys, the two employees, two staff members from the, started, you know, doing like this in their seats when they started talking about the fact that they were gonna vote against it. Because we, as a council, had already voted for it. So there was someone there from the council that, or someone, I guess, of authority, that knew, that had to explain to them, once again, we had done it before, that they're not, that's not within their preview. They can't vote against what the council did. All they can vote for is, are these funds, is the expenditure proper to come from the CRDC?
Appropriate and available.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so-
I'm not sure if I missed it, but that's the purpose why we have two council-
Not, not necessarily, that's just an example of avoiding an issue, because they were gonna vote against it.
Well, okay, so, my understanding of a board, right, is we put them there, and they do whatever they need to do, and put recommendations to the council. And we look at that con, that recommendation, and based on that recommendation and our finding, we whether to vote for it or whatever it is that we need to do. But if we're actually doing it, we're going backwards, and I, I'm just not sure what the board purpose is then. If, and then plus, and I'm not, you've probably answered also, but if they're actually in there and, and it goes to the board first, and it comes to the council, and there has to be a vote.
The board, in this case, does not decide what's in the city park, it's your business. Their only businesses are when you use CRDC funds to fund it. They were talking about not approving the bridge, they couldn't approve the bridge.
Right, just the funding.
So the, the council was concerned that the board was acting outside the scope of their legal authority, and so they put two members of the council on there to be a watchdog.
And one of them didn't show up?
Now, the state law says that the board may consist of five members, all of which could be the city's own. So there's nothing illegal about appointing council members to that board. You may, from a political standpoint, disagree with it, but there's nothing illegal about it. And, but the council felt, time the board was acting alter wires, they were acting outside the scope of their authority, outside what was gonna be in the park.
So that was the whole reason why putting two council members on them?
I can speak for them, but that was my observation from my side. That they were acting outside the scope of what the council wanted them to do. They didn't get to decide whether the bridge was gonna go up. Their only job was to decide whether they were gonna use CRDC funds to help fund-
Then I think, in my opinion, that's the wrong way to do it. Because what's the purpose of having a board if we're just restrained, or, in a way, I'm-
They're a statutory board, so it's not just, they make recommendations on certain things they can do and not do under the act.
And, and we just need to make sure they do it right, but not by putting two council members on that board, and then basically, and then there, if it comes to the city, or to the council, council actually vote on that matter, that comes, comes, comes to the, the council, right? And I, I'm just thinking that, there's a little, isn't that a little problematic?
From a legal standpoint, when you've got the right to appoint all five members and put your own members on the board, you can pretty much do as you please. I mean, I, I, how can I say that? It's not a legal issue, it's a policy issue, and I don't need to be in the middle of it. So appointing two council members is perfectly legal, pass that, it's okay.
Okay, and in fact, the discussion was, we, when we did this, we felt we were being very forthcoming, putting three citizens on the committees. And after going through it, like Cliff said, that group gets sidetracked sometimes.
Well, then, it needs to be addressed that way, but I, I just think that it's not right that we could, to correct what they're doing wrong, to put two council members, I think that's just wrong. In the sense that we have a board for a reason, and we should have a board chair and, you know, vice chair, and, and if they're sidetracking, then we just need to make sure they're not, they're not sidetracking, and followed by the guidelines.
Brianna?
I was just saying, I, I'm, I'm wondering, I mean, I think you bring up a great point, and I think, I'm hearing, like, potential conflicts of interest, and so, wondering if that's something we could, because I don't know the original reason of why all of it, but, I mean, I guess it doesn't hurt to relook into it and discuss it, and could we add that to our, an item in the future?
And, and that's the same thing with the conduct review board.
Right, exactly.
That's, that's, and, and here's something else that I, I've heard from some of the board members. They, they feel that the things that are supposed to come to them, and they make the recommendation, whatever, but some things, some things that come to them are just being told what's decided, rather than going to them with the recommendation. And I just think that's kind of defeats the purpose of-
What's your date on that? What's your date on that?
What's my date? How far back? I wanna say come-
We changed that in August.
Changed that in August last year?
Yes.
The CRDC one?
Yes.
CRDC.
What did we change in August?
What did we change?
Because I asked for the items to come to the CRDC before they came to council.
They, they now come to, to, we changed the policy in that, if they operate policy-
For the CRDC? I'm not just talking about CRDC only, I'm just talking about a number of boards that they, they feel that they're not given the opportunity to provide inputs and recommendations. Instead, they're being told backwards, where they're just saying, hey, this is what, that was decided. And then it kind of defeats the purpose of the board, so, that's what I've heard. And I'm just saying, if that's the way we go on some of the things, then there's really no purpose of some of the boards, and-
And you're only talking-
Yeah, I don't know, you know, who the heck that is, what board that is.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is it only conduct review and CRDC, those would be the only two, right?
No, that, I'm, I'm not talking about having council members on, I'm just talking about in general where the board members are not, you know.
I don't, I don't know which specifics you're talking about, so it's hard to-
It, it's, it's hard, I don't want to name, name the board, but, and I think that, that, maybe we need to kind of look at that and try to-
Can I, can I just ask a question? I mean, it's seven thirty-five. Can you and I talk, so that I can find you out?
Sure.
Because I can't help if I don't know.
Sure.
And I haven't had any of my liaisons come to us and say, hey, by the way, we've got a problem, and I've had no board members contact me or my liaisons and say, hey, I disagree with this.
Okay.
So, any help? Perfect, just to talk about it offline.
Did you? Last, last comment, though.
Yeah, I didn't know the, the policy change that it was going to CRDC now. I didn't see any writings either, so when did, you just unilaterally made the decision?
I asked Mike to change the agenda, and have things come to CRDC first, to eliminate the exact problem that the council had already voted on it, and the CRDC had no authority.
But, yeah, that was, when I was on CRDC initially, that's how it was operating.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And they reversed it, council reversed it.
They did, yes.
And now you just reversed it.
Yes.
Okay.
Does it sound like a future topic for discussion?
It is.
The process is right.
Yeah, well, I-
They see it first.
They should, but the council changed, now this is one-
One last comment about the board. I understand, just like we talked about special counsel and, and conduct review board, I know some, there's no reason to really meet sometimes, but the problem is, if they don't meet, they don't know each other, especially the conduct review board, when they don't even know the members. And I think that's, we need to do something about, maybe even have it once or twice a year where they, you go through the, what, what is expected, and what the procedures are on some of the things, so that they'll be kind of engaged, in a sense? I'm, I'm just saying that some of them talk about they never meet, and they don't know who they are, and then they, who the other members are, and they give-
Well, the only one that doesn't meet is the conduct review board.
The review board, and, so, no, oh, no, board of adjustment went for years, but sometimes without meeting.
Well, they met four times this past year.
Yeah.
This past year, yes, but in the past, that's not the case.
Okay, we are at the end of work session, it's seven thirty-eight. We will be convening into regular session of the Capel in five minutes.
Getting together, not necessarily for an official meeting, but for training.
Everyone can continue talking, we're still waiting for a quorum of the council to get back up here. Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, January 25th. The time is 7:43 PM and we're going to reconvene into the regular session of the Capel City Council. Just as a reminder, persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance or the public hearing must sign the appropriate register located outside the council chambers and list their residence address. We do have one person signed up to speak a little bit later, and that's Mr. Henry. We do limit total amount of talk to 20 minutes. So, Mark, are you going to be speaking for the group?
Two minutes.
We were going to give you four.
I only need two.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. So, moving on, tonight, we have Pastor Beth with the First United Methodist Church that's going to give our invocation, and then we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Will everyone please rise?
Thank you. Join me in prayer, please. Gracious God, loving God, you have truly blessed us with this day, a day that started so full of promise and possibility, a day that allowed us to explore your beautiful world and find where we fit into it. As we gather this night and seek to do the business of your community, we ask you to continue to bless us, bless these who have taken on the responsibility of doing this work for this community, but also all who have gathered to hear, to learn, to have their voices heard. May you be present through all the conversation, may your spirit be felt, and may we make decisions that are not only good for the community but pleasing unto you. Be with us all in this time together, for it is in your son's precious name that we lift up this prayer. Amen.
Amen. Item seven is a proclamation designating January 25th as Jennifer Miller Day. Please hear the proclamation and counsel for your consideration. Whereas Jennifer Miller was hired by the City of Capel as the chief accountant in 1991 and was promoted to Assistant Director of Finance in 1993, and then promoted to Director of Finance in 1995, and whereas Jennifer served under three city managers and made countless presentations to city councils over her 30-year tenure, we couldn't even count the number of councilmen that involved. Whereas Jennifer led the finance department through many challenges, changes, and developments, always looking for ways to improve the processes for internal efficiencies and exceptional customer service. Whereas Jennifer coordinated multiple city bond issues that have funded numerous capital projects throughout the city in order to make Capel a city of sound infrastructure and facilities, and prepared multiple budgets that provided the people, training, tools, and equipment that allowed this city to serve our residents and make Capel a family community for a lifetime. And whereas, under Jennifer's leadership, the City of Capel obtained the AAA bond rating from both Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's, received this prestigious distinguished buzzet presentation award 12 consecutive years, and the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, all 30 years of her tenure, from the Government Finance Officers Association. And whereas Jennifer's legacy will not only be the strong financial position of the city but also the mentoring she has provided to current and past members of the City of Capel. As a lifelong learner, Jennifer has consistently challenged others to continuously grow and develop, not only technically but also as leaders. Jennifer's leadership and compassion in the face of COVID-19 for her staff exceeded all expectations. Jennifer's years of service to the employees and the citizens of Capel will be evident for years to come. Now therefore, I, Wes Mays, the Mayor of the City of Capel, do proclaim January 25th, 2022, as Jennifer Miller Appreciation Day. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused a seal of the City of Capel to be affixed as 25th day of January 2022. Counsel? Mr. Carol, Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item number seven, approving the proclamation designated in January 25th, 2022 as Jennifer Miller Appreciation Day.
Thank you, and seconded by Mayor Protem Hinojosa-Smith. All in favor?
Long Hinojosa-Smith, Carol Nevels, John Matthew Hill, all approve, none opposed. The motion carries.
You know, I don't even know how to, I was trying to explain to somebody what it meant to get the, that, the award for 30 years in a row, and it was hard to even express what that meant. So, you've been the finance director ever since I got involved in this and many, many council members and mayors before that, so from the City of Capel, thank you very much. It's hard to pass out a proclamation with a microphone in your, in the other hand, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, counsel, does anybody, Councilmember Hill?
I just want to thank you for all your years of service and your hard work during the summers, because that's where all the rubber meets the road, when you guys are putting together the budgets and the way you walk through with counsel, you know, every aspect of the budget, it's just been fantastic, and I really appreciate learning from you. Thanks.
Mayor Protem.
I can't see you, Jennifer.
I'm kidding. You know, thank you really isn't even enough. Gosh, I feel like I've known you a really long time, but just wanted to say really thank you for your hard work, for your friendship, for your professionalism, and just everything that you've done to, I mean, just for all of us and bringing us on board and looking out for the city in the best interests of our community. Never being, you know, always being willing to answer our questions, day and night, and just doing it with such grace, really truly appreciated. You will be missed, but thank you for everything that you've done.
Councilmember Carol.
Well, Ms. Miller, congratulations. I've been on here just a short time, but even the time being on here and the time I have questioned either you or your staff, you lend your staff to answer all those questions, it's been phenomenal. And I will tell you, even before being on council for a decade on one of our commissions, just understanding how the city works and how it's put together, I know there's a lot that goes into it, but at the end of the day, it matters who's steering the ship, and having you steer the ship for the last 30 years has been phenomenal for the city. So, and I appreciate on behalf of the city just what you have set up for the future for this city. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to say 30 years, just a couple of years before I was born, but, but no, no, I want to say that 30 years speaks for itself and the things that you have done for City of Capel, and, you know, sincerely from the bottom of my heart, I'm sure all the residents as well, they feel the same way. So, thank you so much for everything that you've done and hope you enjoy the retirement soon.
I was going to call on someone else. Okay. So, I'm going to present this to you first and I'm going to make a few statements, but this is, there's a little bit of an inside joke to what I'm about ready to give her. What made me laugh is the fact that there's three of them, three gratitude journals. The inside joke there is that they were passed out to the department to everybody except Jennifer because she was walking out the door, and so they, Jennifer made note of the fact that, hey, I'm still here, you know, she hadn't left yet. So, I will say February 4th, on Friday afternoon, here at City Hall, we'll be having a celebration of service for Jennifer, and everyone here is invited and hopefully that you'll be able to attend. Jennifer and I, you know, I started in 2012 as Deputy City Manager, and when, right off the bat, Jennifer and I came to a quick understanding, and that was, she was in charge and I needed to follow whatever instructions she gave me as far as how to deal with the city finances. Now, in all reality, it's been great to serve with Jennifer. Her reputation in the field is stellar, as I've traveled around the state and talked to folks, and they talk about the City of Capel's finances, they always mention the work that Jennifer does. So, in your hands, the city's finances have been well looked over, looked after, taken care of, and it's helped us grow as a community. And so, your service, this is one of those times where people who sit in an office, people don't recognize necessarily all the time that what public service is about, but after being here for 30 years, the dedication, the effort, the commitment, the loyalty, those words mean something, and they mean something to Jennifer. And because of that, we're all better for it. We're better for it as an organization, and I will tell you as a community, we're better for it as well. Those aren't just words, but the reality is, look around, understand what we have in this community, and it's because of people like Jennifer who've dedicated their life, I think you made the comment the other day that you've actually raised your girls.
I've been here longer than one.
Right, so if you think about that, right, in terms of just raising your family in a place like this. So, you know, someone who's also dedicated 30 years in today's environment, that doesn't happen very often, and we need to be thankful for somebody who's made that kind of commitment to us, especially in the role of Finance Director, because that just provides so much consistency. So, there's lots of words that we're going to share again on February 4th, but here's your three books of gratitude journals, and congratulations.
Thank you.
End book. And before I let her say a few words, we did want to recognize your husband's here today, and that comes, his, their marriage comes with a great sacrifice to what she does for the city, so thank you very much. Would you, do you have a few words to say?
I have a few words. I wrote them down. But I am going to be brief before I get too emotional. I want to just thank Mayor and Council for the proclamation and the kind words. And as I look back over the 30-plus years of my career, there are many groups and individuals that I need to thank for having the trust in me, the faith in me, and the encouraging me to go after anything I wanted, that I could accomplish anything I wanted to accomplish. So, to recognize, first group is the Mayor and Council, the current Mayor and Council and then past Mayor and Councils. The city management, they helped support me. The citizens of Capel, they were part of the support. My coworkers. And then, I would also like to ask the employees of the finance department to stand for me. This is the group that made me successful. It was their hard work and dedication. I can't do it alone, and it was with these people that we did it together. So, I would like for everyone to help me thank them for their service also. A little bit more.
You said pages more?
I said two pages. Okay. This is where I might get a little bit emotional. My decision to retire was a difficult one. Like Mike said, I've spent more than half my life working for the City of Capel and serving the citizens of Capel. Walking away or retiring from the work aspect will be very, very easy. The people aspect of Capel, that's going to be my hard part. This is my family, and I'm going to miss you all. Thank you.
Item number eight is citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their residence address. We have one person signed up to speak. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes. The time may be extended for an additional two minutes with approval of the council. Persons who signed up to speak will be called in order, I think I can count to one, sorry. So, no personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. Once the timer sounds, the city secretary will notify the speaker and request the mayor and city council if they would like to extend the speaker's time. On the, signed up to speak tonight is Mr. Mark Henry. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Mark Henry, and I live at 611 Kane Mount Lane. Wrote this down so I'd stay on message. All right, good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Thank you for your time and for making the Magnolia Park Trail Connector Project a priority. We know this topic is on this evening's agenda and want to provide a few comments in advance of the presentation. The West Denton Creek Neighborhood Alliance has stayed in contact with the Parks and Rec team, and we appreciate their work on this as well, especially their partnering spirit while doing further research. Director Carpenter from Parks and Rec was kind enough to allow us a confidential preview of what Park and Rec and their outside engineering firm has developed as a solution to recommend. We feel it is a smart plan. It addresses the desire for a shaded path, it addresses the erosion and some levee stability issues of the pond and the creek, and it follows the logical route that was always envisioned and preferred for this trail. Now, in the spirit of partnering, we also want to let you, the council, know that we have budgeted some money ourselves, small amount, to help with a to-be-determined beautification project for the trail. And we have shared this with Jessica Carpenter previously. Our thoughts on this are to work with John Elias and his team to determine how we can best be helpful to add value and beauty to the final result. Now, my good friend Deepak Jayavant, I'm sure most of you know him, had also planned to be here this evening, thus the extra time, but a conflict in his schedule prevented him from doing so. However, Deepak did also ask that I share with you his support for the southern route that is planned, that is being proposed. Thank you so much.
Thank you for presenting tonight. Did we have anybody else sign up? All right, thank you. Moving on. Item number nine is consent agenda. This is typically routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. Counsel, is there any desire to pull any item? I'll entertain a motion then. Councilmember Hill.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number nine, consent agenda, items A through F.
Thank you, and seconded by Councilmember Nevels. All in favor?
Long Hinojosa-Smith, Carol Nevels, John Matthew Hill, all approve, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 10 is discussion recommendation regarding the Magnolia Park Trail section, Mr. John Elias. You know, one little comment I had before John gets up here to speak, we're, we're, this has been, we've been discussing this for some time, and we appreciate everyone's patience. We don't necessarily make decisions quickly, but we do try to make the right one. So, John?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is John Elias. I'm the Park Projects Manager with the City of Capel, and I'm here tonight for a continued discussion on the Magnolia Park Trail alignment options. I'll start with a brief summary. It's been a while since we talked about it. The last time we discussed this was in August, so I wanted to do a quick, brief summary of where we're at, where the project's located, and then we'll take off from there. So, this is the location of Magnolia Park. For those of you that are not familiar with it, it's on the northwest part of Capel. It's basically west of Denton Tap, south of 121, just north of the Andy Brown West Park. The area we're talking about is going to be the second lake in Magnolia Park where this red dot is. This is a little bit zoomed-in picture of the park and the lake that we're talking about. You can see on the left-hand side of this picture where the trail stops with the East Lake subdivision, and then on the right-hand side of this screen, the trail stops at the spillway. Our discussions to this point have been, do we continue straight and just connect the two trails, or do we look at going around on the north side of the lake? And that brings us to, if I can get this to work. There we go. This is a brief summary of everything that we've talked about with this project. I'm not going to read through them all because it's quite a bit. There's multiple council meetings, park board meetings, public input meetings, meeting with HOA engineers, it's all on here. I would call your attention to the last bullet point, which is August 21st, 2021. That is when the West Denton Creek Neighborhood Alliance did a presentation to council where they showed a exhibit where the trail alignment could go on the south side of the lake. At the conclusion of their presentation, Mayor and Council directed staff to review the presentation. It was really the first time we got to see it, when you all got to see it, so our direction was to review it and come back to a future council meeting to discuss it with you, and that's why we're here tonight. So, this is what the alliance presented that night. This is what they refer to as Design Alternative A. Obviously, it goes all the way along the south side, it goes through the trees all the way along and ties into the existing trails, as you saw in my previous exhibit. Basically, they did just fill in the line and draw it all the way across. So, city staff, including myself, public works, Mike Garza from Engineering, and our consultant engineer, half associates, reviewed what they presented, we looked into it. The first thing that we did, half associates did, was they got with TCEQ. We had to determine if this was truly a dam by TCEQ standards. That changes a lot of things. If it's considered a dam by their standards, it changes a lot of things. We may not even have been able to put this trail in. There are several criteria that would cause this to be considered a dam. They are the capacity of the water, what's on the downhill side of it, you know, the impacts that a flood could cause. The capacity of this water, the size of the area, this does not, it's not classified as a dam per TCEQ. So, that's one hurdle we don't have to worry about, and that is, that's a good thing. Believe me, that's a good thing. The other thing that we looked into was, we will have to get with the Corps of Engineers, even to do minor maintenance around this pond and in the water, we will have to get a permit from the Corps of Engineers. It will end up hopefully being a nationwide permit, but we will have to go through the Corps of Engineers to do any work in this area, and that's understandable, and we expected that. So, let me back that up real quick before I show you that. Our biggest concerns with this trail is where they've got the alignment going down through the middle of the trees. In our previous discussions with you, all along, we said we could probably do a trail on the south side, but we were very wary of cutting down the trees. In our opinion, the trees are what's holding this creek bank in place. That looks good to run it down through the trees, it does provide shade, but ultimately, our biggest fear is it will create... It does provide shade, but ultimately, our biggest fear is it will create, you know, it'll make that more unstable, that whole area will be more unstable. This is not a levee. This is not a dam. This is a creek bank with a lake next to it. There's nothing engineered about this. The only thing that's holding that in place is the trees. So, with that being said, we did look into how could a trail go down through here, and we did come up with some good options. This is what we come up with. Basically, the trail will go along the south side, but we would not go down through the middle of the trees. Our intent will be to hug the, what would be the south edge of the lake as close as we can get to save as many trees as we possibly can. We're still going to have to take some trees, but our priority is to save as many as we can. Again, we think that's what's holding this in place. They're very valuable. In order to do the trail on that side, and we've talked about this in previous meetings as well, we're going to have to armor that bank all the way down to put infrastructure in there and make sure that it will stay there. We'll need to armor that bank. What we're recommending is gabion mattress, which is, gabions are rock baskets. This picture looks more like riprap, and in fact, that's what it was, but that's not what we're going to do. Riprap is cheaper, but it moves, and we've seen the water and what can happen in this area in 2015. So, that's why we're proposing to go with gabion mattresses. They'll hold the rock in place. It's a little bit more expensive to do because it's all hand-done, you know, whereas riprap can be dumped with equipment. This is all hand-placed by labor, but it will stay there. If we get a large, high-water event there, we won't lose all the riprap. It won't all end up in the creek. The gabions will stay in place. Our intent with the gabion mattresses is that over time, this, these rock baskets will silt in. It will take a significant amount of time for them completely fill in, probably five to 10 years, to where it will go back and look like a creek bank again, or a lake edge again. But when we first build it and install it, it's going to look engineered. It's going to have a gabion look to it. But it can be done. I do have a section that goes through this trail. If you can see the big letter A and little letter A just on the edge of the spillway, this is a section of what that might look like as we go down through there. Again, we realize we're going to have to take out some trees. We don't want to do much, but we will have to take some. As you can see, the gabion basket will go from the trail all the way down to, you know, the bottom of the pond. We will go back in and reclaim what has been eroded away and put select backfill in there to restore that area, and then put the gabion mattresses in place to hold it in place. This section of trail is where we're coming off of the spillway. So, we do show railings here on both sides because when you first come off the spillway on the west side, it's pretty narrow. It's steep on both sides. We don't anticipate the railing going the entire length of this trail, but it is shown here, we will have some of it out there. As a part of this study, when we start to design this, we'll look at the creek side as well, as well as the spillway. Our initial review of the creek side, it's not too bad. We'll probably have to do a little bit over there, but most of the erosion is on the, actually on the pond side and a little bit around the spillway. So, I would like to back up one slide to mainly so that the people in the neighborhood can see. We're not just talking about armoring by the trail. We're going to have to go east of the spillway and kind of wrap that corner a little bit. See if I can get this to work. Over here, we're still going to have, this is actually where the worst erosion is at, right here in this area and right through there. So, we will have to stabilize that area just to hold that bank. If we're going to go to the trouble of permitting and doing erosion repairs out here, we want to do the whole thing while we're there. So, that's important to note for everybody that's here, that we're not just talking this area here. We'll stabilize it all the way around, all the way down to here. As we get down to this end, this is where we will end up getting into some trees. There's no way around it. So, we do know we're going to have to do some trees, but we'll keep it to as minimum as possible. So, we've worked up a estimate of what the probable cost would be to do a trail and the erosion control measures on this side. It totals up to, right out of a million dollars. There are a lot of unknowns in this project. When we start working with the Corps of Engineers, we could end up going down some different avenues, and so I do have a 30% contingency on here as well. That brings the total up to 1.3 million. That's the cost to do the erosion control and the trail installation. So, and that gray trail on the south side of the lake is possible. It won't look like the one that they presented. It would require significant armoring along the southern lake edge to prevent erosion. Additionally, the trail alignment would need to be along the south edge. The trail will be installed on kind of a shelf. I mean, we're not going to build a shelf out into the lake and encroach on the capacity of the lake. That'll kick in a whole another set of permits and dealing with the Corps of Engineers, but we're going to get as close as we can, and we'll be able to kind of make a shelf that it will be, you know, select field that we know, engineered field underneath it, and then with the erosion protection on the side. That's how we think we can get it in there. City staff and half and associates agree that tree removal needs to be at a minimum. The trees, again, are what's holding the creek bank in place. Let's see where I'm at. So, we pulled together the estimate probable cost. As I said, it was a million dollars. We had a 30% contingency. It takes it to 1.3. Engineering and design fees for this trail project will be $191,000. Basically, we have, we split it in to two, depending on which direction council would like to go. The trail design is $45,000 to do the trail design. To do the engineering and all of the erosion control, that design fee was $147,000. So, if we go on the south side, the total would be $191,000 just for the engineering and the design fees, and then we would have 1.3 million dollars in construction, putting the project at just a little over 1.5 million. As we've said in previous meetings, if we do, or if we do choose to put the trail on the north side, after all these discussions and everything that's been discussed about the erosion, I think we would end up doing some erosion on the south side as well, even if we don't put the trail over there. That will kick in the same permitting and engineering fees. So, in a roundabout way, it kind of costs the same whether we do the north side and still go back and do some erosion control on the south side, or if we do the trail on the south side and the erosion control, the cost is going to be pretty close to the same. The difference would be, we probably won't have to do quite as much erosion control on the south side if we're not trying to protect infrastructure. So, it would be a little bit cheaper for the trail to go on the north side than the south side, but the, what offsets it is, the trail on the, on the north side is actually about 500 linear feet longer. We're about 1,000 linear feet on the south side. It's about 1,500 linear feet to go around on the north side. So, it's almost a wash. It might be a little bit cheaper to do it on the, on the north side, but for the most part, it's pretty much a wash. The project's going to come in at about just under 1.6 million dollars, no matter which side. So, with that being said, to summarize and enclose this presentation, we've looked at multiple options to get this trail section installed, including north side of the lake, south side of the lake, elevated boardwalks all the way across, partial boardwalks, some at-grade, and then we've obviously looked at at-grade crossings. We've had multiple meetings to gather input, including community input meetings, HOA public input meetings. We've met with the HOA's engineer. We've met with the park board three times on this project, and counting this meeting tonight, we've talked with you all seven times about this project. The system has worked. This project has been vetted. Everybody's had a chance to say what they wanted to say. It's taken a little longer, but I put a lot of that on the 2020. We shut down and didn't do anything. So, even though it, it seems like three years, we didn't do anything for a full year. So, we think that we have a good solution. It's a win-win, in our opinion, for the homeowners of Magnolia Park and for the city, that everybody is in agreement that the trail section is, it's a vital trail section for our trail system and to get kids to the school. Everybody has agreed with that. So, we're confident we can do this now with the erosion measures that we would put in place, and so with that, the Parks and Recreation Department is ready to recommend the southern alignment as discussed in this meeting. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Elias. Just a point of note, this would have normally been in a work session. You're not asking, actually asking for a vote on whether to authorize it, just a a direction on whether to head north or south. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. With that, we'll open it up to the council for questions. Councilmember Hill.
Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Elias. You know, I was always in favor of the northern route because I didn't want to invest money in a trail that could potentially wash away if we put it on, on the southern route. So, you're saying that all the, all the mechanisms that caused the failure of the previous trail that was going through the southern route will be mitigated by the gabion mattresses and the other reinforcing that you're doing on the creek side?
Yes, that's correct. It's, it's our opinion that the trail that was put in the first time, was put in by the developer. I think they literally just went out there and formed on top of the ground and poured it. It eroded away from the lake, and it undercut it. So, that's what the gabion mattress will prevent. Our biggest concern was the big water events, you know, and we'll still have concerns with that. There's no 100% guarantees, but everything that we're doing here, we're confident that it can withstand it.
Okay. And then, I had two other things. So, the timeframe with the design of the trail system and the reinforcing of the banks, and then the permit approval by the Corps of Engineers, how far down the road are we looking? I mean, probably a year and a half?
No. We're hopeful that this will fall under a nationwide permit. They don't take quite as long. Half and associates is telling us five to six months to design it. Obviously, we will be in construction in 2023, but we're hopeful that we can get it designed. Again, there are some unknowns, and when you're dealing with the Corps of Engineers, we can always veer off and end up in something. That's why we have the contingency in there. But the, the time for the permit should be under a year. We're thinking more like five to six months.
Well, this is just definitely allayed all my concerns, and so I can support the southern route.
Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, Mr. Elias, for the presentation. Couple of things, and you actually spoke to this at the end, so I just want to clarify and make sure I understood. So, if you went on the north side, we would still, there would still really need to be some work done on the existing, well, I say the existing trail or the existing piece on the south side, correct? And you're, and you were saying it's likely to be a similar dollar amount than what we'd be spending in this situation?
Yes, that's correct. We would have to go through the same permitting process, pretty much the same engineering design process. We need to do some erosion repair over there. So, yeah, we're kind of blending two projects into one, erosion repairs and a trail project. And just with all the discussion, all the concerns, and they're valid concerns that are, you know, around that spillway and stuff, I don't think we just want to put the trail on the north side and move on down the road. I think we would want to address both. When we're going to be out there, you know, it's going to be kind of blown up out there anyway with the construction, and so that's our assumption, that we will want to address it and do some erosion control no matter where we put the trail.
Okay. And second question, you mentioned, so there's going to be some of the trees will have to come out, and you say that stabilizes the south side currently. And I know there's no promises, or you can't guarantee anything, but on the risk, on the risk spectrum, do we think we're going to get into the project and uncover something that we were not aware of before that's going to, that potentially would shut the project down or make us revamp something? I mean, how do we feel about that level of risk?
I don't think that's, that's the risk. I think the risk is that we end up having to do more with the water and mess with the capacity of the lake, which will kick in additional permitting, which will then get into the year and a half worth of designing it. You know, we're confident if we go with these gabion mattresses that, that we can get that erosion control in place. We are going to have to take some trees, and, you know, we're going to go into this trying to save everyone, and every one that we have to take out, you know, it's going to have to be for, you know, no other way around it. So, I don't, I can't tell you anything that would potentially shut it down, you know, or the situation that you brought up.
Right.
The reason that we have the bigger contingency is just in case the Corps decides we need to do something else, and this is a bigger deal than, than what we're, what we think.
Right. And I did certainly notice the 30%, 30% seemed certainly larger than, larger than normal and everything.
In, in that contingency, I could add that, you know, we're going to have, we're probably going to have to deal with the fish, and we have a local fish biologist that we use here. You know, I anticipate having to get him involved, and then obviously, we're going to have some lab testing and stuff like that that would come out of that project budget.
Well, we certainly, we certainly have spent a lot of time on this over the last two or three years, and I appreciate that, between the neighborhood and the cities and everybody that's been involved, trying to come together with some agreement, and I know cost is also at play here, in, in play, and so I just appreciate everybody that has worked together. And I would tend to, based on what I've heard and everything, I would also tend to say the south side trail is what we ought to go with. Thanks.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Elias, thank you for the presentation, but the south side trail, there was a proposal before from the city. How is it different from this one?
It's, it's not a whole lot different. It was, the, the south side that we had, we had proposed going halfway down at grade and doing boardwalk the rest of it. That estimate was just under a million dollars. We had some armoring only halfway down. We weren't going to armor it where we were going to do the boardwalk. So, it's still pretty close. It was right at a million dollars for the half and half. Now, we've, we've had several over there. We did a elevated boardwalk all the way across. That was going to be over $2 million. That's when we decided we need to look for other options and started looking at the north side or how we could do this. So, the last estimate that I showed you for the south side was half elevated structure, half at grade, half of that area getting armored, and it was just under a million dollars. I have the exact amount if you want it, but it was like 987,000.
If I remember correctly, it was close to, if I remember, I think you had mentioned that at the end of the day, it might be close to 1.2 million dollars, but the design was quite different from what's being proposed today, I believe.
Well, again, this is an exhibit, not a design, and we showed some, we mentioned that we would have to armor the bank. I didn't, we didn't go to the detail that this one is. It, again, not a whole lot different. We were going halfway across that grade with that one and elevated structure the rest. So, the difference wasn't much. We, we could do that way for about a million dollars as well.
And the second question is, you talked about the right side of the lake. There also needs to be some stabilization. Is that included in the cost of this?
Yes.
As well?
Yes.
Okay. And so, in essence, you're saying that the proposal for the, the trail on the north side, that's about 370, 371,000, $71,000. But you're saying if we did that and we addressed the erosion, that would have been 1.1 million on the south side?
The erosion on the south side, well, the estimate on the north side, that estimate's going on two years old now, and so we were saying it was going to be in the mid-3s, you know, 300,000. We would have had a design fee on there as well, and then the erosion on the south side, I don't know that we'll spend quite a million dollars, but it'll be close. It depends on how far we go with it. You know, if there's no infrastructure there, we'll be able to reduce it some. And maybe I misspoke. It's not, they're going to be exactly It's not, they're going to be exactly the same, but they're pretty close to the same, you know? It may be a hundred thousand dollars difference if we did it on the north side and then the erosion on the south side. I don't know if I'm answering your question or confusing you more.
Now, I know you guys, you had an ongoing discussion with the, I guess, the homeowners association, Magnolia Park homeowners association. I think Mr. Henry also mentioned about that they were going to contribute to the fund to this project, or did I hear that correctly?
That was news to me, so. He met with Jessica earlier in the week. I wasn't in that meeting.
Yeah, I was just wondering what that amount was.
I don't, I don't have an answer for that.
Oh, okay. Now it's small.
We're talking about trees and bushes, and we have money set aside, but we haven't voted on it.
Okay.
And I do have some trees replacement in the estimate that I showed you of that 1.3 million dollars. There's trees to be planted back in there.
So the HOA engineer actually brought a proposal last time that equated to, I believe it was like 700,000, somewhere around the ballpark, going through the middle ground? Do you recall?
I don't think it was that high. Their engineer basically came in and gave an estimate just for the flatwork. He didn't have any estimates for engineering designs permitting through the Corps. It was literally a linear foot pricing for the concrete trail. I don't have that information in front of me. I believe it was in the 300,000 range.
I'm sorry, you said 300,000?
It was in the 300,000 range, as I recall. I don't have that number. But that did not include any erosion control. He mentioned that stem walls might help, and, you know, he threw some stuff out there. But the numbers that he showed was just the trail. There was no design fees, there was no permitting, there was no erosion control included in the number that he showed you. That was just the flatwork.
I have to take a look at that again, but, okay. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Neville.
Mr. Elias, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. You know, just coming into this project in the middle of last year, obviously, kind of kept up with it. I think what really struck me the most is, you know, going out this past summer and really visiting the site and seeing some of the erosion issues that were happening out there. I'm really happy to see the level of detail that's been put into that because, I mean, like you said, we could go out there and put a trail in for pretty cheap, but it's about reinforcing that bank, making sure that it's stable for the future, and, you know, making sure that we try to mitigate any future damage as well. So I just want to applaud you guys, Parks and Rec Department, working with other city departments and listening to the citizens. I think that that's, really speaks to the collaborative nature of what we try to do here at the City of Cappell. So, you know, definitely saw the other numbers as well, but when you get out there, I think you really see the scope of the project, you really understand what needs to be done there. You know, I definitely, based on what you presented today with the mitigation measures that you guys are discussing, I'm definitely in support of the southern trail. So thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate it. And I just want to say thank you guys so much for coming out to support this. Thank you.
Mayor Protim Hinozawa Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Mine's really a comment. I don't really have much questions other than to say I was hoping that we would reach a collaborative solution. And so I know it's taken a while. We've been talking about this for a really long time. So I appreciate everyone being here and your patience. And Mr. Elias, thank you for the presentation. I mean, to me, it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, but while the number seems really somewhat steep, right? At the same time, I feel like we're solving a lot at the same time, right? So especially with the erosion issues. And so I do like the southern alignment and what you've proposed. I presume that, you tell me, but I presume the next step is if there is alignment across the council, that we would have a design and more details along the way as to actual cost and phase and how this would kind of play out over time. I think if anything, if I would ask from a cost perspective, is just, you always worry about scope creep. And so I guess I, maybe I do have a quick question is, do you feel like you've kind of taken all that into account in the current proposal that you have before us?
We tried. Again, that's why we have a very large contingency on there. We don't normally come to you asking for 30% to play with. It's for that very reason. You know, so yeah, I think we've looked at it all, we vetted it all as good as we can. There are some unknowns. So, you know, I'm hoping it'll come in at closer to a million, all said and done, and not need that contingency.
Right. Well, and I appreciate that, you know, the neighborhood's willing to pitch in whatever amount that may be from the beautification standpoint, because I think any type of greenery and trees, because we want to save as many as we can, but if that can be added, I think that's also a great win-win. So all that to say is I do support this particular solution.
Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, John, for the presentation. Thank you for working with the Magnolia Park HOA. I think Councilmember mentioned about the collaboration. We appreciate that you're working with the Magnolia Park HOA. I do have a question for you. I'm looking at the memo, page four, the picture that we have.
Yeah, that's an old.
It shows, do you have that?
I do.
Okay.
I meant to take that off.
There's a boardwalk there?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's the one that I was talking about earlier. The last thing that we priced on the south side was half and half. That picture was so far down my memo when I was writing it that I forgot it was on there. So that's not what we're proposing tonight. That's what the last time we were in talking about the south side, and that's, if you're looking at that memo, that's where the number was just under a million dollars was for that one. That's, that's not what we're recommending.
Right. Thank you. I just want to make sure that's part of the memo. So when I saw that, hmm, are we having a boardwalk still there?
Yeah. No, those were the two options that we were discussing before we showed you this one.
Okay. One more question for you is, what is one or two items that you went over changed your recommendation from the north side to the south side?
Well, we basically have created two projects now, you know? Before, we were talking about doing the trail, and we knew we needed to do some erosion control. The erosion has gotten worse. And so, and then obviously, I've met with a lot of people out there, and I understand, you know, why they would prefer it to be on the south side. I, like, probably like Councilman Hill said, you know, I was very nervous about you doing this south side. I was here in 2015. I stood out there and took those pictures, and I watched the velocity of that water. And that's why we're saying we can't cut these trees down and just run that down the top. It won't stay there, and it'll soften that whole area. So meeting with the engineers, determining, you know, what we would have to do, I think it can be done. And, again, the money's not exactly the same, but it's pretty close to the same. And so if it costs about the same, and we can get the vital trail section in, and we can keep these folks happy in doing that and make it work, that's a win-win for everybody. And so that's, that's where we came around to recommending the south side.
So what I'm hearing is you're trying to kill two birds with one stone, fixing the issue on the southern side on the erosion as well as having a trail?
Yeah. It's kind of killing two birds with one stone. I mean, it's doing two projects at one time.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Elias? I've, as a person who's been aware of this issue since I made my first jog around the track and came to a dead end, said, what the hell? And so here we are, 10 years, 11 years later, and it's still, what the hell? So, but what I heard tonight was a little different than even when we did the first numbers.
Right.
Because it was a big percentage difference in the north side and the south side, as you'll recall, when we first ran the numbers. And the north side was the obvious way to go based on those numbers. It's good that you went back and took the time, or, you know, through the efforts of parks, and really took a look at this thing and really honed it down. And you're exactly right, two projects. You know, the lower project was not considered in the, in the numbers. It was a one thing deal, we're going around the north side. So this is a good clarification of what needs to be done, and the numbers are close. So, you know, it's still, it's still most likely, since you're actually doing two projects, in one, if you go to this, on the south side, you're taking care of the erosion as well as the trail itself. And as you know, that you and I have talked many times about you're torturing the trees, so this is not unusual, you know, for you when we, when we do development around here. And is that not right, John? Have you heard that before?
I'm the senior barber. I protect our trees.
So I would have been shocked if you hadn't talked about how you were going to have to torture the trees, some of them. But he's gotten pretty good at minimizing his torturing of the trees in these developments. So I think probably based on this situation, I wouldn't have any trouble voting for it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a follow-up question. You mentioned that you believe that this, this design would somewhat withstand if we had that type of flooding in 2015. But with this design moving forward, what kind of maintenance are we looking at, you know, not just one year, but I'm talking about, you know, several years down the road?
Well, and that's why we wanted to use the gabion mattresses. We looked at riprap. You know, our concern was riprap is mobile. It can be moved with that kind of water volume, so then we would be back. We will have obvious trail maintenance like we have in all of our trails that are in the floodplain in our anti-brow trail systems. They all go underwater, they get trash and silt. We have to close them down for a couple of days, then we got to go back, clean them up, and get them open back up. We will have that. If we have large events, we could lose the rails out here. We lost the rails out there around the spillway in the last event. We'll beef these up best we can, but, you know, there's, there's good potential that the rails don't hold up. The trail, we're pretty sure can stay in place, and the riprap will hold that there. The trails catching, or the rail, I'm saying trail, the rail would be potentially, you know, we might have to come back at some point to do some work on those rails. That's why we don't want to run the rails the entire length of the trail. But other than that...
But as far as the gabion mattress you're installing here, is that going to require some extensive maintenance years down the road, you know, a couple of years down the road?
You know, there may be some. Gabion mattresses are expensive. They're put in place by hand, and for very good reason, they stay and they work. And so, no, I don't anticipate a bunch of maintenance on the gabions. In fact, we want them to silt in and cover over.
And are there any other places that we are actually replicating this? That we have known that these type of design actually works in?
Well, we use gabions on the spillway on the other side. That spillway has gabion baskets and pilings at the bottom of that creek that go out about 100 feet on both sides of that spillway. They have filled in with silt over the years so that you can barely tell now. I mean, this picture shows some riprap placement out there, potentially if we need it. But those are already gabion baskets. Gabions are common in creek areas. It's more in public works, you know, they use them a lot. So, yeah, they're proven to work. We're confident in the gabion mattress.
And on the previous trail, we just have not implemented this type of design at all? Would that was washed out before?
On the previous trail that was installed here?
That was washed out before?
Yeah. There was, again, that was, that was installed by the developer. It only went maybe a third of the way around, and it just dead-ended. There was nothing to protect that trail. And it was really pretty close to the lake edge already. And so it just undercut with wave action. When it got to the point where it was two-thirds of the sidewalk was undercut, we had to take it out for safety reasons. It didn't go anywhere anyway. It was a dead end. So there was no engineering or, or erosion protection for the first trail that was installed there. That was not, I need to be clear, that was not installed by the city. We didn't engineer it, we didn't install it. It was installed by the developer.
And just for clarification, the erosion control is actually upon the city. Is that correct?
The erosion control is...
On the south side erosion control, it's actually the city's responsibility to...
100% of this is our responsibility. It's in the park. All of this is within the city park. So yes, it's all going to be city's responsibility for maintenance.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your, your years of working on this and the, and the patience from both the city staff and Parks and Rec and the homeowners as well, the, both sides. Since this is just an administrative work session type of item, I'm just going to ask for a show of hands, and I'm going to ask for a show of hands who are in favor of the south side route. And then I'll follow up with a show of hands who are in favor of the north, northern route. And obviously, please only vote one time. So, so all in favor of the southern route as described today, please raise your hand. All right? And all in favor of the northern route? All right? I hope I don't see any votes there. Mr. Elias, I think you have your orders there. So thank you very much for your time, and thanks to everyone for coming this evening and sitting it out and participating in our process. We know it's painful and long, but thank you very much. Everybody is welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Item number 11 is consider approval of purchase of four replacement fire department ambulances through an internal, inter-local cooperative purchase agreement with by-board in the amount of 1,174,552 as budgeted and authorizing the city manager to sign any necessary documents. I believe we have Fire Chief Kevin Richardson here tonight. Chief.
Waiting for them to queue us up. Okay. Well, good evening. I am back. Yep, still there, still there. So I'd actually like to talk this evening about items number 11, to replace the four ambulances that we mentioned. But I'd also like to simultaneously kind of discuss item number 12 at the same time. Purchasing of these...
Chief, go ahead and read, read item 12 into the record.
Sure, no problems. I can definitely read that in. Read it in, he says. I got it right here. Okay. So it would be to include item number 12 to be discussed, which is to consider approval to purchase automated stretcher loading systems for four fire department ambulances in the amount of 177,283.96 by Texas sole source vendor Stryker Medical, as budgeted and authorizing the city manager to sign any necessary documents. So these two items do go together, but they are being separated this evening for financial savings purposes. And I'll cover that in a minute. So the fire department has within our emergency fleet four mobile intensive care units. These are basically emergency rooms on wheels that support our advanced life support services through the paramedic program in the fire department. This MICU is what it's called, mobile intensive care unit. This class... department. This MICU is what it's called, Mobile Intensive Care Unit. This classification is the highest level of certification that's available. These vehicles are commonly referred to as ambulances or medics. We refer to them as medics. And they provide patient transportation for our emergency medical services within the fire department. The current four ambulances were purchased back in 2015 and will have reached their projected lifespan of six years for frontline emergency response. And then will result in trade-in value for the new replacement purchases that we're talking about this evening. This replacement model of replacing all the units at one time has been successful for us in recent years. We've done this four times, to my knowledge, back in 2003. We did it again in 2008, followed it up in 2015. And so, here I am, again, in 2022. The standardized fleet, standardized fleet is, means consistency in all areas. From our operations perspective, it means less training for our firefighters. We have a single certification driver program. The apparatus, they all handle the same. Their turning ratios are the same. The driving controls are all in the same area. Their standardized equipment in the same places, in the same locations. It's, it's more efficient on the scene. And from a fleet maintenance perspective, again, it's less training hours for our vehicle technicians. It's much easier for our maintenance. There's predictive and routine maintenance, as identified. Our mechanics are very familiar with one chassis. We have the same parts on the shelf. They're interchangeable. And it really helps with our continuity of operations in the event that we have to interchange parts. It's much safer and more economical to manage, economical to manage the same fleet. We have planned this replacement request via our five-year planning process, and the funding has been adopted within the 21, 22 budget. In doing so, we had an internal committee that did all the research to make sure that we meet and exceed all of our industry standards from the fire and EMS side. There's a whole slew of those standards. I do want to also add that the industry is experiencing, like most, extended construction and delivery times. This is due to supply and workforce impacts from the pandemic. And we have since been advised to expect price increases along with the trending of the market. Vendors have also estimated that there is up to a two-year delivery from the time of order. What I'd like to do now is kind of move on to this item number 12 and talk my way through this loading system. Within each four of these ambulances is this automatic stretcher loading system. They're designed and functions to assist our paramedics in loading and unloading patients from the apparatus. The current stretcher loading systems were purchased along with the current fleet in 2015 as part of the construction. So, they were within the specifications. They too have reached their expected lifespan with the decommissioning and replacement of the current ambulances. Typically, this equipment is included within the specifications, the design of the apparatus, and the construction of the ambulance itself. However, we have identified significant savings by eliminating the middleman and the associated marked up prices from a third party. So, in doing so, we have separated this item from the specification listing and requested to purchase the equipment ourselves and have that equipment shipped directly to the manufacturer for installation during the build process. And this will result in approximately a $40,000 savings overall for the whole package. The fiscal impact of these two agenda items together are within the adopted budget in the capital replacement fund and together are less than what we had originally budgeted. Staff is recommending funding as budgeted rather than using any of the ARPA funds. Okay. So, with that, I would be happy to entertain any comments or questions.
I've got one.
Okay.
The spec on these things was 18 pages long. How long did it take you to put that together?
Well, I didn't do it. I have a really good staff that did it. They take a lot, they take great pride in, in the, in, in all the details. And we have firefighters that range from six foot seven to four foot 11. And so, the design committee had to make sure they looked at every detail as far as ergonomics and driving compartments and the way that they're laid out.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you for the presentation. A question for you is, I heard you said if we order today, it will take two years?
They said up to two years.
Okay.
Yes.
Up to two years. Now, the equipments that we are ordering, how old is this vehicle was?
The vehicles that we have now were purchased in 2015. So, they're nearing, they were placed in service in 2016. And so, they, they would be physically in service for six years in October of this year.
Okay. Do we go by the year or do we go by the usage?
Very good question. So typically, what we've done, what we learned over the year, like this is our fourth time to do it. Our fleet maintenance, I've got a staff member here tonight that can go in great detail. But typically, what we do is, we have learned over time, we originally went with, I believe it was five years. And at that fifth year, we had, we had, we were having so many problems, we had to make adjustments. The next set at, during the process, each time, they're evaluated on their own merit, because not every unit is the same.
Right.
They do their best to maintain them the best that they can. But even the manufacturers, within the manufacturers, they're different as well. And so, they, our fleet maintenance folks have them on a six-year rotation. That's where we're at. We're actually, we're at five years. They've already extended it to six years because they were in such good shape. But they're projecting now that that's going to be the end of their expected lifespan. So through the five-year process, they evaluate them every year to determine what their final lifespan will be.
Thank you.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I noticed that we're paying $340,000 for each of them, and then they're giving us $40,000 for trade-in value.
That's correct.
I, I think you could have done better than that.
Man, I tell you, I, I wish we could. So, again, our fleet services guys have done a phenomenal job. We researched to look whether it was more beneficial for us to auction them off ourselves. And some most recent like units from our neighbors in some neighboring communities, we're only getting $26,000. So, when we were offering $46,000 for the trade value of what we had, we thought that was our best option. Now, there's just not a huge market for used ambulances. And I think that helps drive the price.
So, just following up on Councilmember Matthew's question, so basically, we've gone to the point where we're actually going by the years rather than the condition?
No, that's not necessarily...
Usage, not, yeah, usage.
Yes. Yes. So, there, there's a lot of things. There's time, there are hour meters, they're based on time, and, and just basically the condition of what they're in. So, it really doesn't matter how many years they've been in service. It matters what their condition is.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, this is just sort of a, a nitpick. We're getting so little for the trade-in. Is there any reason to keep one of them? For training reasons or for any, any other, any reason to keep one, since it's really not costing us? Or is it just too much hassle and too much maintenance to hold on to it?
Well, I'll, I'll say last year, we went through a huge process to reduce our fleet numbers, because just staff and manpower and upkeep. And we, we actually reduced our fleet. And so, we, we don't want to just have unnecessary vehicles that don't have a server purpose.
Yeah. Okay. That's just curious.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. I will entertain a motion at this point, and we can entertain a single motion for both items.
I move to approve items 11 and 12.
Thank you. And a second from Councilmember Long. All in favor?
Long Inahosa Smith, Carol Nevels, John Matthew Hill, all approved, none opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Item number 13 is the city manager report, project updates and future agendas.
Mayor, just have two updates. As the newspaper quoted me the other day, do everything you can to stay off of South Belt Line. I will say that again. Do everything you can. Just to give an example, I was telling the mayor about this the other day. One evening, I went to, down South Belt Line, and one lane was closed. And this was heading north. And the traffic was backed up well beyond Wrangler already at 6 o'clock. So, you can imagine what it's going to be like when there's only one lane in each direction. So, every, we are doing everything possible to let people know, stay off of South Belt Line Road. So, the big traffic switch is currently planned to occur on February 14th. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. So, what will happen? The traffic will be transitioned to the northbound lanes. It hack berry, and southbound lanes will then become reconstructed. Then the intersection improvements continue. They're focusing on Bethel School, and you've noticed some of the locates going on at 121 and Denton Tab. So, progress continues to be made on those two projects.
Thank you for your updates.
Item number 14 is mayor and council reports. The Chamber of Commerce is having the Members' Choice Awards and Community Gala on January 29th from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Each year, this event honors local businesses, organizations, and individuals that made a significant impact in the community. This year's gala is sponsored by the City of Capella and AAA Texas. And then you can create magical memories at our annual Bee Mine Valentine Dance. This year, we're excited to invite dads, daughters, moms, sons, grandpas, grandmas, and the whole family. The dance will be held on February 5th at the Four Points by Sheridan DFW North from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Registration is available online. Item number 15 is council committee reports concerning items of community involvement with no council action or deliberation involved. Item A is a report on the Carrollton Farmers' Branch ISD and Lewisville ISD from Councilmember Mark Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's start off with Carrollton Farmers' Branch ISD. CFP ISD continues to make progress with their campus renovations. They recently held the ribbon cutting ceremonies at Field Mellow School and RL Turner High School. These renovations were part of the 2018 voter-approved bond. CFP officially welcomed Carolyn Benavides to the Board of Trustees at the December 2nd, 2021 Board of Trustees Meeting. She was reported, she was appointed to fill a vacancy left by Juan Renteria, who resigned from his seat in 2021. CFP is proud to announce that 394 middle and high school students made district or region, region band, choir, and/or orchestra. And Creekview High School's moot court team has been awarded $2,000 grant from the Dallas Association of Young Lawyers Foundation to help cover the expenses of the team's spring competitive season. And then, let's step over here to Lewisville. Okay. Big congratulations is due to all the winners of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Art and Photo Contest. The winners have been announced ahead of the 29th Annual MOK Celebration, which is scheduled for, was scheduled for January 17th. The theme of this year's event was "A World Divided, Tomorrow United." To see a list of all the winners, please go, please go to the district's website, www.lisd.net. The search for the new superintendent is winding down. The lone finalist is expected to be announced in mid-February. LISD's 4th Annual Career Out will be Friday, March 4th. Career Out is a day for juniors and seniors to shadow executives, administrators, and team members from businesses in and around the community. The 2022 event can be either virtual or in person. Businesses that are interested in participating can learn more at lisd.net/careerout. And the final item, the board approved the academic calendar for the 2022 and 23 school year. The first day of school will be August 10th. And for dates of all the years, holiday breaks, and other important dates, go to the district's website. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item B is a report on Capella ISD. Councilmember Kevin Nevels.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. A couple of things coming up. Capella ISD is partnering with Tom Thumb Pharmacy to provide a COVID-19 vaccine clinic for children ages five and up for the district community members who would like to get the vaccine or need a booster. The clinics will be held on January 25th tonight, and also another one on February 15th in the gym of Valley Ranch Elementary School from 3:30 to 7:00. Valley Ranch Elementary is located at 9800 Rodeo Drive in Irving. Tom Thumb will provide the pediatric Pfizer vaccine for five to 11-year-olds, adult Pfizer vaccine for those 12 and up, and the Moderna vaccine for those that are age 18 or older. And booster shots will be available. A couple of bad weather dates and upcoming school holidays. Friday, February 18th is a CISD district holiday, and Monday, February 21st is a bad weather day for CISD. No school unless the schools are closed for any reason. Spring break is March 14th through 18th, and then that Friday before, March 11th, will be an early release day. CISD has kicked off, or is kicking off kindergarten enrollment that will begin after spring break on March 22nd. Capella ISD is also hosting a job fair on Saturday, April 9th. More information will be available soon on the Capella ISD website. May 7th, 2022, election information. CISD is now accepting applications for a place on the ballot of the May 7th, 2022 CISD School Board of Trustees election. Places 1, 2, and 3 are up for election. The deadline to apply is Friday, February 18th at 5:00 p.m. CISD is offering a new student I-lead program for high school juniors in the district. Throughout a series of sessions, selected participants will explore their personal roles in the community and school leadership and volunteer service. CISD staff and local business partners will sponsor these seminars on topics such as personal leadership skills, youth advocacy, service and volunteerism, local government in action, and business growth and development. And then a couple of accolades to kind of wrap things up. See, Capella High School Theater presents SpongeBob the Musical at Capella High School Auditorium on the weekends of January 29th to January 30th and February 4th to February 6th. Fantastic show for all, all ages. I encourage everyone, the entire Capella community, to attend. You can find ticket information on the CISD website. And then some national achievements, we'd like to recognize, several choir and band students have achieved all-state recognition. CHS senior Jessica Wang is one of 300 students in the nation and one of only 15 in Texas chosen as a, as top student scientist in the Regeneron Science Talent Search 2022. And Bianca Benitez, a biology teacher at Capella High School, was recently selected as a Clay's Nobel Educator of Distinction by the National Society of High School Scholars. Just like me, Ms. Benitez is an alumni of Capella High School and a former student of Superintendent Brad Hunt. Superintendent Hunt asked me to like include that little part. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Item C is a report on the Capella's, on the Capella seniors by Councilmember John. John?
Thank you, Mayor. But I really don't have anything to report, because I'm actually meeting them tomorrow. And I'm inviting all of you, if you want to be there, at 11:30 Senior Center. So, I'll be there tomorrow.
Well, wish them our best and enjoy your lunch. Thank you very much. Item number 16 is public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Do we have any PSAs? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number 17, which is necessary action from the executive session. And I'll turn this over to city attorney, Bob Hager. Bob?
Thank you, Mayor and council. As a result of the executive session earlier, you received the report of special counsel involving a complaint by a citizen against a member of the Conduct Review Board. The following is the recommendation, which I'll read into the record. Recommendation of special counsel regarding the complaint of ethics violation by Venky Van Catraman. I have reviewed the complaint submitted regarding an... I have reviewed the complaint submitted regarding an alleged violation of the written standard of conduct for the officers of the City of Capella enshrined in Section 1-13-4. The complaint alleges that Mr. Venky Catraman violated Section J by knowingly engaging activities in outside activities which would conflict with or be incompatible with his position as an officer of the city. Mr. Venky Catraman currently serves as a member of the Conduct Review Board. The first determination is to make as if Mr. Venky Catraman is, as alleged, an officer of the city of Capella and therefore bound by the standards of conduct stated. As an appointed member of the Conduct Review Board, it seems clear that he should be considered an officer of the city and therefore is subject to the standards of conduct. However, I do not find that the conduct alleged, presuming it is accurate as presented, does not rise to the level of a violation of the standards as alleged for the following reasons. Number one, the statements made by Mr. Venky Catraman were not made in the course of his service as an officer of the city, i.e. a member of the Conduct Review Board. Number two, the statements made by Mr. Venky Catraman do not directly reference the City of Capella, its residents, its employees, its businesses, or in any manner directly concerning the City of Capella. Number three, the statements as alleged do not in of themselves indicate a violation of Section J of the standards of conduct. At this time as Special Counsel, I would recommend that this matter be forwarded, would not be forwarded to the Conduct Review Board for further proceedings under Section 1-13-7 as I do not find the allegations constitute a violation of Section J of the standards of conduct for the officers of the city as alleged in the complaint. David Crawford, Special Counsel. And I would ask that this be entered into minutes and public record, as is the complaint.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Answer any questions you would have.
Anybody have questions for Mr. Hager?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There being no further business before the city council, we are adjourned at 9:10 p.m. Thank you very much.